I call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council this Tuesday, September seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Our city clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Councilmember Schizola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present. At this point, I'd like to invite up Chris Miranda and Austin Arabia to help lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up to our podium over here and hit the little mic picture to turn it green. The little picture of the mic, the white.
All right.
There we go.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose hands the one nation in my name is with liberty and justice for all.
Stay there. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. And I have these certificates for you guys. That's supposed to be the right person there? So thank you very much for leading the pledge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris is our new unhoused specialist and Austin is in the building division as a permit technician. Thank you guys. Next is special presentations of proclamations. There are none. Communications and petitions, there are none. Next is oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for anybody wishing to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, it'd be nice to fill out a speaker card that's up here in the front and you are limited to two minutes. Counsel cannot, generally is prohibited from discussing or taking action at this time. However, counsel may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And I have some more requests here. I'm going to start with Joseph.
I just want to discuss our homeless people and because I know San Jose and San Francisco is already addressing it. So I was wondering if Campbell is also in the, if that's in the plans too.
Okay, we just had our new unhoused specialist.
Huh?
Our new person in charge of the unhoused pop, I think his title is unhoused specialist was just the one who led the pledge.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. All right. So now I have Lilia. Lila. I spelled, I pronounced it wrong. Myla. And then Ashana, Anna, and Neil. Welcome.
Oh.
You're, that'll go on by itself.
Just go ahead and start.
Oh, okay. As a resident of Campbell, I'm very concerned about the ongoing genocide of Palestinians. And I understand many of you may not feel comfortable doing something or feel it is not your place to weigh in on a foreign conflict. However, it's not simply a foreign conflict and it's simply, it is impacting local residents in our city. Since today, I've sat with a Palestinian friend who lives in our area. Her family is in Gaza and has been displaced for over a year now. Her cousin is staying in the safe zone area. Just yesterday, a bomb struck only ten meters away, which is about the size of a school bus from her cousin's tent. My friend showed me a picture with just, just a few hours ago. Raining human flesh from the blast had fallen on her tent. That is how close she was to the bomb. She, she also showed me a picture of her father holding the remains of his nine-year-old daughter. What he was holding in his hands looked like ground beef. The nine-year-old girl was standing ten meters away from my friend's cousin, and this is a safe zone. I am mortified. Children younger than my own continue to be killed on a daily basis, and this is not a war, this is genocide. As of yesterday, the Ministry of Health in Gaza just published that seven hundred and ten newborn babies have been killed, eleven thousand children have been killed, and UNICEF has just warned that Gaza has become a graveyard for children. Campbell residents spend over six hundred thousand dollars per year in federal taxes to pay for Israel's weapons, and Biden just approved twenty billion of weapons last week. I'm beyond hurt and mortified. If you're not seeing what I'm seeing, please educate yourself. Next, on October tenth, there will be a movie screening where Olive Tree sweeps, and I invite you to go to the screening and the one of the producers, Asher, would be there for Q and A. I worry that everyone in Gaza could be killed or displaced and that the culture entire destroyed if this goes on. Campbell, she stands strong. Thank you.
No one pronounces.
Asani.
Asani.
I want to thank all of you and especially Mayor Landry for the beautiful way you ran the last meeting. We were out. After that meeting, many of us wondered what we should do next to help end the slaughter in Gaza. For me, I decided to travel to Palestine on a peaceful protective presence mission. In case you're unfamiliar, Palestinians in the West Bank under Israeli rule do not have equal rights and privileges, and they are often subject to attacks by racists who wish to ethnically cleanse the area of its Palestinian residents. I decided to go during the olive harvest in this upcoming October because the presence of internationals can reduce the severity and frequency of expected attacks. This summer, I started learning Arabic. I made plans to cover my work and my family obligations, and I took trainings where I was told that no matter what is done to us, the expectation is that we will never fight back except in the case of sexual assault. I'm now going to share something that not even my opinions know. With a breaking heart, I've decided not to go. Last week, an American citizen on a protective presence mission was shot in the head by an Israeli military sniper. This unprovoked murder of a beautiful young woman represents a new low in the Israeli government's treatment of peaceful international observers. It also scared my children, and they begged me not to go. While I feel some shame to be sitting here safely while so many suffer, what this means is that I now have more time to devote to the ceasefire effort. I look forward to working with many dear friends and with you to help Campbell live up to the values we all believe in around safety, freedom, and equality for all. I respectfully ask you, beg you, to put consideration of a ceasefire resolution on the agenda so that our community can come together in a beautiful conversation on this important topic.
My name is Anna Maria, and I'm a substitute teacher in the Campbell Union School District where both of my kids went to school. The last time I came to a council meeting was over Zoom. I woke up at four AM in the morning in Sweden where I was visiting family because I wanted to virtually support and hear the voices of many of my friends and others who came to speak on behalf of peace in Gaza. This was at the end of June. I felt so proud and moved by each of their statements. Summer has since passed, and I have had two months of beautiful travel. The new school year has begun. I have had a chance for respite, to refresh, to enjoy, to savor in peace. Meanwhile, in Gaza, there has been no respite. The number killed has now reached over forty-one thousand people, with more than ninety-five thousand people injured and more than ten thousand people missing. And in the last month, the war has expanded into the occupied West Bank, where we now also count the numbers, at least seven hundred people dead, including a hundred and sixty children, killed by both arms settlers, many of whom are also citizens from the US, and soldiers of the Israeli Defense Force, more than six thousand injured. As of ten days ago, the UN, the World Health Organization, have said Israeli attacks have damaged, and just imagine this, maybe you close your eyes and think about these numbers, more than half of homes in Gaza destroyed, eighty percent of businesses and all commercial facilities destroyed, eighty-five percent of school buildings gone, twenty hospitals destroyed, remaining sixteen partially functional, sixty, sixty-five percent gone. We need a ceasefire.
Good evening. My name is Neil Klebenstein. I came to the last meeting when our group spoke, but I didn't share, but I wanted to share tonight. I live in Campbell, up just north of Payne Avenue off of Winchester. I have two wonderful children and who go to school here, ages seven and nine. I married, we, I met my wife at the Valentine's Day Fun Run at Campbell Park about twelve years ago. Our favorite restaurants are here, TGI Sushi's and Luna and La Pizzeria. I love the community and I thank you for all, all of you for making it a wonderful community. I came here tonight again because I don't want us to forget the suffering of the families of people in Gaza, in the West Bank, and in Israel. Lately, I, when I wake up in the morning, I'm grateful and I, and I'm grateful, I just think, and I have my little kid sit next to me, and I'm grateful for having a warm bed, a roof over my house with no one dropping bombs on it. That's what I think about. I, I, you know, it, it makes me grateful to think that, and I think of how, you know, what, what would we do and what would I do if my children and I were, were in the situation that the, the families and the parents and the grandparents have been put in in Gaza. There are almost two million people in Gaza. There are about forty thousand Hamas fighters in Gaza. So all of those other people are just people trying to survive and, and just in atrocious situations. And I think that, you know, if we are against, against war and if we are for peace and that we are against suffering, we have to support a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you all for speaking tonight. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. We're going to move on to Mayor's announcements. September is Suicide Prevention Month. It is time to raise awareness of this urgently important crisis. All month, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. It's a time to shift public perception, spread hope, and share vital information. Whether you're facing mental health struggles, emotional distress, alcohol or drug use concerns, or just need someone to talk to, call nine eight eight. You are not alone. Hashtag be the, and the number one, two, is the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Hotlines message for National Suicide Prevention Month and beyond. Next, your vote counts. Legislation has passed providing local funding expansion to cities like ours. The legislation that the City of Campbell sought has cleared the state legislation and is now headed for the governor's signature. The City of Campbell encourages all eligible residents to participate in the upcoming November fifth municipal election where two city council members can be selected and a decision rendered on whether to adopt Measure K, the city's local funding and community services menu. Next, please join me tomorrow night, Wednesday, September eighteenth, at the annual State of the City address. I will be discussing the current state of the city, recent accomplishments, measure O updates, and the city's sustainability efforts. The State of the City address will be held at the Orchard City Banquet Hall. Doors open at six thirty PM with the event starting promptly at seven PM. Please RSVP to mayor, state of the city at Camp, I'm sorry, at cityofcampbell.com. The fourteenth Annual Caregivers Count Conference. The Caregivers Count Conference offers a comprehensive educational series designed to support family caregivers. The two thousand and twenty-four conference will feature two virtual sessions from ten AM to twelve PM on September twenty-first and the twenty-eighth, and one in-person session on October fifth at the Campbell Community Center. Topics are creating a safe home for your loved one, end-of-life support, navigating trauma and self-care and resiliency. All sessions are free by pre-registering at caregiverscount.net. The Friends of Campbell Library is hosting a fundraiser at the Campbell Chipotle tomorrow, Wednesday, September eighteenth at four PM. Twenty-five percent of event sales will be donated, sorry, to the Campbell Library. Order online at chipotle.com and use the code LJYDJD2. Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to pull an item off the consent? Is there anybody from the audience?
I'd like to pull item number six, please.
Number six. Okay, anybody else? No, and no one from the audience. So I've entertained a motion for items one through five and reference the desk item number five.
The consent calendar items one through five, including the desk items.
Second.
Second with the desk item.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second by Dan. Roll call.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. That motion passes. Next is item number six, commending John Birchfield for more than seven years of service with the City of Campbell upon his retirement. And Ann.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank John for his service to the city and the expertise and experience that he brought to the city and, and how well he served our citizens and the professional manner in which he did that. So I just wanted to congratulate you on, on your retirement and, and wish you well.
Thank you. Dan?
I also wanted to add my congratulations and thanks. I know we're committing you for seven years, but you certainly worked a lot longer than seven years. Just happens to be seven years here in Campbell, but a long distinguished career. And thank you very much for your overall public service. Thank you.
I also just wanted to express my appreciation for, for your work. I know in speaking with, with colleagues that you left a deep impact with your expertise here during that time. And we, we appreciate you and, and I wish you the best on your time.
I just want to echo all my fellow council members' comments, and I mean, you're one of the people that makes everybody who comes here and lives here love Campbell so much. And so your service is really appreciated.
Yes, and thank you, John. Appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into the city. And I know you have more than seven years of total experience, but this last seven here with the city. So I wish you well in your retirement and your next adventure in life. Thank you very much.
And with that, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution commending John Birchfield for more than seven years of outstanding service to the City of Campbell.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. Thank you very much. That motion passes. Todd?
Yes.
Or John? Does John, 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 why don't, John, John?
They get away.
John, come on up, please, John. All right. We're gonna make you come up here.
For you, Mayor Landry.
Oh, thank you very much. Your kind words are appreciated.
Well, I would like to echo the comments that we heard from the council as, as many of you have taken, taken notice of. John has had a long distinguished career, more than forty-five years in the industry, so to speak, twenty-nine years in public service. And we're very fortunate to have him here in Campbell over the last seven. John is, from a technical perspective, he's kind of like our in-house pavement expert, can solve a lot of issues regarding our grading and drainage and ADA issues. But above and beyond that, John is a real people person. And whether you're a business out on, out on the corridor for one of the projects that he helped inspect, like the, the old Camden Avenue section or the Winchester Boulevard repaving project, he works well with, with contractors, he works well with residents, he works well with business owners, all in an effort to, to, to have, have a finalized, a, a, a very beneficial finalized project that, that, that really benefits the community. And all that is taking into consideration his technical skills, technical skills and how well he works with people. And so whether it was on the large projects that I've mentioned or on individual approachment permits where he's dealing directly with an individual contractor or homeowner, he could brought the same level of professionalism to his job every day. We were extremely fortunate to have him, and I think it would only be appropriate if John didn't take that to say a few words. Congratulations, by the way.
Wow.
And with all that said, we don't want you going. John, you're gonna be heavily missed.
It's, it's, it was a tough decision, to be honest with you, because I do love what I do. And thank you for all the kind words that describes that seems like I know how to do what I do well. So I just want to say thank you for all the support, Public Works, the Public Works team, and, and really both, all the teams build, and I work with the building folks as well. Just a really good group of public servants that, that really take their, their jobs seriously and do a great job for Campbell. So thank you all.
Can you have your family here with you tonight?
I do.
The whole row?
The whole, the whole gang.
The whole gang.
You know, minus two, actually. And we're a blended family. So my son Kyle in the back, he's the oldest, my youngest son Kevin here, his wife Nabila, this is, oh, my granddaughter. That's Phoenix. That's my daughter-in-law Jewel with baby Harlow. And we have Danica and her fiance Nick, and this is my wife Dawn. And appreciate, appreciate all the support.
You have quite a fan pool there.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I bribed them. I told them I'd buy them dinner if they came. They all showed up.
Thank you, John. Thank you for all your years of service.
Appreciate it.
Back to the formalities here. Next is public hearing and introduction of ordinances. Is there any council member on item number seven that needs to make any disclosures?
I will like to recuse myself from item number seven since I own property within three hundred feet of the area.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any, no. All right. So next is item seven, and we have Larissa Lowman presenting. Hello?
Thank you. The item here tonight, item number seven is for historic rescission of a property that's currently listed on Historic Resource Inventory, or HRI. The property is located, as noted, at sixty-seven Sunnyside Avenue here in the City of Campbell. The project site is currently developed with a one and a half story, single-family dwelling. The dwelling was constructed around nineteen sixteen in the folk Victorian style, which is a simple derivative of the Queen Anne Cottage style. In nineteen seventy-seven, the City of Campbell conducted a Historic Resource Inventory and identified the project sixty-seven Sunnyside as potentially significant. In nineteen seventy-nine, Campbell adopted its first Historic Preservation Ordinance, establishing criteria for designating historic resources. And in nineteen eighty-four, sixty-seven Sunnyside was officially added to the HRI, and the property has remained on the list since. The building was determined to be architecturally significant for blending Queen Anne Cottage elements with simple, simple folk Victorian architectural styles, which reflected early development trends in the City of Campbell. As you'll note from the photo on the slide, key design features include a simple boxed volume with a pyramid roof and a dominant front porch. The property also showcases a decorative louvered fence, an archway with original woodwork, and a cutaway bay window with original wood trim. The property's historic significance dates back to its original land grant, which played a crucial role in the early development of the Santa Clara County Valley, particularly in the City of Campbell. In eighteen eighty-one, the Kennedy family acquired the property and established a farm, which did become a cornerstone for the local community and did contribute to the architectural, or sorry, the agricultural development of the region. The subject property was created through a subdivision of this original Kennedy farm, and this reflected a broader transformation of the area as larger farms were subdivided to accommodate population growth, which did reflect dynamic changes in land use and community development in the Santa Clara Valley. All right, okay. The applicant is requesting to rescind the property from the city's HRI. This action would remove any historic significance of the property. The property would no longer be reviewed in the context of the Historic Preservation Ordinance and would be ineligible for any future Mills Act contracts. As you'll know from the staff report, historic consultants were brought on to help in this determination. Both historic evaluations, which are included as attachments, conclude that the house has undergone extensive changes since its original construction, most notably a front porch remodel in the nineteen twenties. The front porch was further remodeled by the current owner, which included the installation of vinyl windows and a door and filling in what was previously a screened corridor. Additional alterations are noted on the screen. Of note, original wood windows have been replaced with vinyl, and extensive interior modifications have further obscured the house's original form, which impacts the historic integrity. The evaluations further addressed historic, the historic connection to people who were important to the City of Campbell's history. While the property's association with the Kennedys was originally deemed significant in nineteen eighty-four, further research in the Sandoval evaluation reveals that Emile and May Fritz were only related through marriage, and they themselves were not significant to the city's history. And while the house does represent early residential development patterns, as mentioned earlier, it does not meet the criteria for historic designation due to a lack of association with pivotal events or notable individuals. The city council should review the criteria for designating a structure of merit as shown on the screen to decide whether the building still meets these standards as listed. If the building no longer meets these standards, it does not meet the minimum requirements to be considered a structure of merit here in the City of Campbell. If the building no longer meets these standards, it does not meet the minimum requirements to be considered a structure of merit here in the city of Campbell. The project has been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board. At its June twenty-sixth hearing, the board did vote unanimously to recommend denial of the request. The board emphasized the importance of maintaining the historical and architectural integrity of the property as part of Campbell's broader preservation efforts. They reasoned that although the property is not of the highest architectural tier, it is valued for representation of Campbell's working class heritage and its distinctive folk Victorian style. The discussion acknowledged that past alterations have not really diminished the historic value, but have instead enhanced the greater historic narrative of the building's evolution. The property is seen as an example of a simplified architectural style, which is a trend, which marks a trend during a period of rapid city expansion, making it significant within the city's historic context. And then on August twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval. The commission based its decision on staff's recommendation and the findings that were listed in both historic evaluations. Although the initial survey recommended or recognized the property for its association with historic figure and architectural value, the reports did conclude that the historical association was insignificant and the architectural merits were minimal from the start and further diminished by alterations under that were executed over time under different ownership. Considering the different recommendations from the Historic Preservation Board and the Planning Commission, along with the consultant's conclusion, staff recommends that the city council follow the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve a resolution supporting the historic rescission request, which is desk item for item seven. And this concludes my presentation at this time and I can now take questions. And the historic consultant is also online, Mark Sandoval, for questions as well.
Questions? I have a question. When you started, you said it would not qualify now. Is that what I heard you say?
That's what we're deciding as part of this decision now is whether or not the, we can go back to the criteria.
No, but I thought when you started, you said that if it came up now to be on the list, it would not qualify. No.
I don't believe I said that.
Okay, I misheard you.
Yeah, that's what we are here to decide of whether or not it would be, it meets the current criteria today. It was listed on the screen.
Okay, sorry, I misheard you then. All right, no questions from council? I invite the applicant or the representative to come up and speak and you have five minutes.
Hello, City Council, Campbell City Council, Mayor Landry, Vice Mayor Lopez and council members. My name is Glenn Kinsey. My wife and I have owned sixty-seven Sunnyside Avenue since nineteen ninety-five. I have tonight asked a friend of mine, Kurt V. Anderson, who is a well-regarded Campbell architect. And who has agreed to assist us in our request to have the property removed from the historic preservation list. Kurt has accompanied me to all three minute meetings we had with the historic board and the planning commission. And then is available tonight to answer questions. And I'm available to answer questions if you have with regard to the owner. So I'll turn it over to Kurt, please.
And a mayor, members of the council, my name is Kurt Anderson. I'm a registered architect. My office is here in Campbell. It just started my fiftieth year of doing work in the city. So, so again, I don't know, you're that age, I hope not, but so I kind of feel like I'm a historical guy, even though I'm not a historical guy. To be a, to be a historical architect, you have to meet a certain criteria, along with the Department of Interior. I am not a historical architect. In fact, I've actually used Mark Sandoval Project in downtown San Jose last year. And he's very, very capable, but he has the qualifications to really, to analyze projects, historical buildings, and see if they meet the Department of Interior's requirements to be on the list. And not only did Sandoval, but the original architect that Glenn hired, they keep the same conclusion. This house does not have the criteria to be based on the Department of Interior. So I would respectfully request that the council support the commission's decision and have this taken off off the list, because it doesn't meet the criteria by the Department of Interior standards. And that's a critical thing. Two, two registered licensed historical architects have the same conclusion. One paper by the owner and another paper by the city of Campbell, they keep the same conclusion. So I would respectfully request that that we support the commission's decision. We'd like to ask you any questions, but again, I'm not a registered licensed architect, I'm a registered architect, which is different, so. But before we, for the great appreciation for staff, Larissa and Rob, they put a lot of time and effort into this, helping Glenn through this arduous process. But in going on for a long time and we're really glad to be here and hopefully get to see to a proper conclusion. So thank you very much. If you have questions, glad to answer. If not, respectfully request an approval and we can move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Come on up. You have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Laura Moore. I live in downtown Campbell. I have been on the preservation board in Campbell for a total of twenty-four years. I did seven years in Los Gatos until the earthquake. And I was on a couple of state committees for that. I am a lover of preservation and I understand that everybody is. But I speak for preservation. I work within preservation. It is all volunteer work. And Campbell has done a phenomenal job of a sign at the end of each end of the downtown. Historic downtown Campbell. We have gathered people in to keep this town a very vibrant, fabulous city that people are flocking to. One of the reasons is, is because we still have some history left. We have the Gainesley House, we have the, you know, residential neighborhoods and we have the downtown. So I am speaking for the, since the mid, well, the late seventies, we had a preservation board. And then the city of Campbell supports that. I've been to city, I've been to state conferences, I, you know, I have supported this city and represented them everywhere, from Eureka to Southern California to Santa Barbara, everywhere. And I think that Campbell being a blue collar orchard town, that's what we are supporting. There are win-wins for that. There are Mills Acts that we should do. We have less than one percent of historic structures. One hundred and forty-seven compared to eighteen thousand five hundred properties. So can we just protect less than one percent? It's like point seven nine nine percent. I am speaking for that tiny number that needs to be protected.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion. Anybody have a?
Well, I'm, as a history guy, I'm always in support of preserving history and remembering history. However, I also tend to side as many times possible with our actual residents. And I heard some, some words, you know, when I read over the report and everything, extensive changes already impacting the historic integrity does not meet the standards. And so ultimately, I will support the staff recommendations on this one.
As you know, I'm a landscape architect. I've done historic restoration of the fountain house and the garden in downtown. And so I appreciate the historic preservation of units and houses and the character of neighborhoods. But I feel with two professional historians, they far exceed any of my qualifications. And if they're recommending, because there were so many revisions and changes to the structure that it no longer really is the viable of this original character and neighborhood, that I would also support the taking it off the list. So at this point, I'll take a motion. Oh, Sergio.
I'll just agree with a lot of what was said. Again, I, you know, definitely feel the importance of preserving our history. But I thought the staff report was was very, very thorough and really went through the different criteria. So considering the modifications, this seems like a, a unique case where the rescission makes sense, where the circumstances wouldn't necessarily apply to the rest of our historic housing stock, which I agree the importance of preserving. But in this case, we'll go with the staff recommendation because of the changes.
You're gonna make a motion?
Sure, I can make a.
Have a, sorry, man, thank you.
I I just want to mention or say that I do value the importance of historic preservation. And it's a high priority for for me as a council member and for the city. But I think this is a unique situation in that I I don't believe keeping the property on the historic resource list would benefit or be enhance the preservation efforts of our city because of the fact that the structure has had multiple alterations and and changes to it that have compromised the integrity of the architecture. So in this case, I will be supporting the property owner's request to to remove the structure from the inventory. Now you may call for a motion.
Okay, now.
Sure, I can make a motion. I I move that the city council adopt a resolution approving the requests of Glenn Kinsey to remove a structure of merit from the historic resource inventory, commonly known as the Emil and May Fritz House, property located at sixty-seven Sunnyside Avenue, and finding the project categorically exempt under section fifteen oh six one B three, the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second. Hang on a second. Did, oh yeah, they both spoke. Sorry, I got them all. Thought I missed one. And you're referencing the desk item?
Yes, including the desk item.
We have a second?
I did.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez. Mayor Landry.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you for coming. Next is new business and item made is the approval of the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, city Campbell investment policy update.
I want to say thank you to the city council. I want to say thank you to the staff. You guys, they're perfect, they're good guys. Really, and you're perfect, and they're appreciated and I appreciate it. And now I'm not leaving Campbell.
All right, now item eight. Do you want to bring Dan back? Oh, yeah, Dan. Yeah, you want to talk to him? I will.
Hello. Good evening. All right. Again, good evening to the council. I'm here, I'm here tonight to present the annual update to our, to the investment policy of, or the of, a year. Happy fiscal year twenty-four oh five. We do an update and a review of the policy each a year. And the lesson is the current year. Also, also joining me tonight are two of our employees of Chandler. Who is, who, who we isolate, put under a contract to also, to also, to also help us in our, to help us in the, in that program. So in, 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 in terms of the update tonight, it's, again, it's a thing that we redo each a year. It's, it's set by a book, a book, a state code. Also, our, our own codes. And the, 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 the investment of policy itself, it controls on what we, what we are and aren't able to purchase. It, 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 it also, it also sets some thousand objectives. It done, it also helps, helps to a state who, who will do what in the program. And also a couple of extras as well. The update and the, the update and the review of, of, of the policy goes on to the goes to the, against the, the committee each a year. They go through the, they, they, they go through the proposed changes. If, if there, if there are changes. We, we, we also go through on this strategic, this through strategic goals and objectives that we hope to achieve over, over the, over the year in the program. So we just met the, had the sub committee on a September ninth. There, 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 there are a couple of proposed changes. And although there are questions, they, they also, I'm a great, had the proposed changes that came from us, came from us, came from the staff and also Chandler. And we also did a econ update as well. So then I, I, I'm, I'm also joined by two, two of our employees from Chandler, Neil and Murphy, and also Aaron and Neil. And they will also go through a couple of the key changes. Also give a, a quick econ update. And if, if there are any, if there are any questions of either me or Chandler, we, we can certainly do those at, and, and also if, if the sub, if the, if the sub, if the sub committee would also, would also want to, as well. So I am going to turn it over to Chandler. And then I will also, I will also turn for questions. That I'll turn over to Neil.
Super. All right, I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Okay, great. So mayor, vice mayor, members of council, thank you very much for inviting us in to present the investment policy updates. And just a quick background, because we'll kind of give you a bit overview. But the city recently underwent a competitive RFP process and selected an investment manager, us Chandler Asset Management. Just to give you a quick background on our firm, we are an investment advisor on the Investment Advisors Act of nineteen forty. And that means we are a fiduciary to the city. Basically, what that means is we need to put And that means we are a fiduciary uh to the city. Um basically, what that means is we need to put your interests ahead of our own. Anytime we're making any investment decisions on the city's portfolio. Uh our firm is headquartered in California and we work with over seventy cities in the state uh which share similar objectives to the city of Campbell. Uh in terms of priorities of safety and liquidity uh for their operating funds before seeking out additional return. So I'll turn to the investment policy. Um so our team reviewed the policy and in general, we found it to be a very robust policy. There were a few proposed changes uh that we reviewed with staff and the finance subcommittee. And so with that, I'll take a look at the uh part four, section E. Uh we added additional language to the Ethics and Conflict of Interest section, specifically calling out government co-regulations governing the disclosure. Of conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act and as regulated by the Fair and Political Practices Commission. Uh under part four, which discusses the authorized investments under the city. Uh we made changes to permit investments which would, you know, first and foremost, conform under California code to the allowable amounts. And then within that, incorporating best practices that would enhance safety in the portfolio. So to give an example. If you look at the limitations under federal agencies. We limit the amount that you can purchase of any one federal agency to thirty percent of any single issuer. And then within that, no more than twenty percent would be permitted to be invested in what we will call callable. Agency securities, which would limit reinvestment risk in the portfolio. So those are things that are considered best practices. And to kind of call it a change that we made that would conform to California code. Look at the money market mutual sections, there was an expansion in the amount that you can invest in that asset class. So before, the city allowed for ten percent. That would be invested in money market mutual funds, and they expanded that under to twenty percent. Uh and the reason we did that is because that's what's allowable under California code. And it's highly unlikely that you're going to be allocating twenty percent of your portfolio into money market funds. Those are very liquid investments. Uh but what I would say, it does create the flexibility if that eventually you're all going to do so. To think about the current interest rate environment, uh there are opportunities from a return perspective that might yield higher returns in specific asset classes. So as those opportunity arise, we don't want to be lose the ability to invest in those asset classes uh based on current market conditions. Uh so there are several changes throughout the permitted investment sections, which pretty much conform on uh those two measures. And then if you look at the last part of it, we wanted to highlight, uh there was a table which uh broke down. Uh based on column and rows uh for permitted investments under that part five. We eliminated that table just based on our experience as an investment manager. It tends to create um some confusion if there's any deviation from one section versus the other. By eliminating that table, we can rely on the language that's in that part five, uh which will explicitly state what investments are permitted and their associated restrictions. Uh so I'll pause there. Um I know we have a discussion about the work we've done on the portfolio and update on the economy, but the item before you. Is related to approval of the investment policy. Um so we provided a draft in our comments. If you have any questions, um we can field your questions if you like.
Do you have more or you want to have questions now?
Um we can.
Yeah.
As well now. I mean, that's fine as well. That's. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Does the finance subcommittee want to make a moment?
Um I just wanted to say that, excuse me, most of the changes are very minor in in uh in concept and and. Are consistent with what's allowable under state law or state guidelines. So um as a commit- subcommittee member, I was comfortable with. Um the recommendations that are being uh brought forth. And there's one amendment that needs to be made. Um it's a more of a housekeeping item. Under the Conflict of Interest Code where a position has to be added to our to our uh list of designated employees, but that'll be come forthcoming in a in a future council meeting.
There's one other issue which came up. Um that was a change requested by the the subcommittee, and that's not reflected. Either in the new the edits, the redline version um or the staff report. And so maybe I just wanted. At this point to ask about that and and the thinking behind that. Um specifically, the sub, the the new language and and even the old policy is inconsistent between using shall not, may not, and does not. And so we we had a discussion about that. We um I think we were open in different ways of addressing it, whether it was to. Add a definition stating that they meant the same thing, um whether it's just to make the language um consistent or just to clarify that somewhere. Um but the reason that was a concern is because under uh as as a matter of law, different terms have different meanings in terms of the weight that they carry. In terms of um how much we're we're bound by them, and we just want to make sure that there is no confusion going forward. So um. I guess you start with the question, why were those changes not not made or reflected in the staff report?
Let me try to address it, Will, and you can add in.
Or just something updating the definition.
No, um yeah, uh first, I want to say that recognize those uh the comments of the commission, uh the subcommittee for sure. Um I think you reflected it uh the discussion correctly. A staff did look at those, uh went through. I think uh they counted eighty-three instances throughout the policy where there was terms sort of used differently as you described. Um in each of those instances, as they looked at them, the terms in in the context of how they were being used was was clear. And the direction that was provided staff was clear. They didn't move forward and do that. We did talk about whether or not adding a definition to clarify that they all meant the same thing. We could do that. It didn't seem necessary because there wasn't, as you actually read each individual comment, that the direction is clear as far as as far as. You know, what is being provided there. Um but uh if the council feels otherwise, uh we would probably add a definition section. But that's that's why you didn't see anything like that.
Thank you for addressing it. I, you know, personally, I'm I'm and I'm curious how you feel. I I'm comfortable moving ahead with this as long as that was looked at uh and and studied.
Yes and no. I it was my understanding from the subcommittee direction that there was going to be some type of either a change to the. To the different sections that have the shell not or the um may not or a definition added to the to the um policy itself to clarify that.
Yeah.
And and it was uh more um you you're you're concerned, um vice mayor. Um so I I think it uh we should have some kind some kind of a disclaimer in there.
Yeah, it 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 was my concern and given what I've heard, I'm okay moving with it. I did want to say that when I, that was first brought to my attention. I, you know, originally wanted to defer the item, just because even the report says that, well, the the subcommittee agreed with the recommendations. And while that's true in terms of what was presented, that doesn't reflect the discussion that happened and and even the change that Anne brought up um about the. You know, what's gonna gonna be another follow-up item, but that was also something that was a topic of of discussion. And so um, you know, I see it maybe more as a learning opportunity in terms of how we go forward and what's reflected and. Being clear also the expectations if something changes in terms of what was expected at the end of the meeting. But in terms of the language and the policy that we're considering today, I'm I'm okay moving forward with that.
Okay, we're gonna open it up to the public first and then. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this item? No? All right, I'll bring it back now. And Will, do you have the final comment?
Um so we 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 also um we're we're um gonna give the uh uh council a a quick um update um on the. On itself. Um so it will be a quick one as well. So that will be okay, or we can go straight.
Is that true?
Yeah, yeah. Look update on that as well.
Super. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we address any questions on the policy before we uh move on to another topic. Um and just to discuss kind of the work that we've done today in terms of expanding the city's portfolio. We haven't been managing the funds for too long since about mid-July. Um but important to note the background of how we manage these funds and what we're doing. Uh so the operating funds that we're managing for the city are the longer-term reserves that are not needed.
Madam Mayor, just, Madam Mayor, may I may just interrupt for just a second here, just as a point of clarification. Um I understand uh that we're providing an update on portfolio performance and where we're at. Is that is, am I clear on what we're talking about here?
Are you, we're we're off topic?
Yes, I I'm sorry. To get to the point, I think that we're off topic and I I believe this is all pertinent stuff, but I would hold this part of the discussion for later discussion. Portfolio performance would be my recommendation.
Well, we'll go with your recommendation then. Uh sorry, Neil. Uh okay, so. We're done with the presentation and I'll bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Well, if I just not sure, I'm not positioned to sort of uh.
I'm I'm not in a position to weigh in on this, uh because I'm not sure what you're talking about uh in terms of shell or. May or something, you know, it's sort of serious in terms of what you mean in terms of your discussion you had.
Sure, if I can clarify, if you look at the proposed, the 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 policy, it's uh attachment B. Um all those different terms are used throughout the the document. So that that was all that I was referring to. And and so we we had a discussion on whether it would be appropriate to uh make that consistent. And the feedback from staff is that they looked at it and if I understand correctly, they believe the language meets, it it, you know, is appropriate.
So it's whether it's shall.
So.
May.
Yeah, I think I think it turned into sort of grammar lessons, English lessons. I mean, typically from a from a an illegal document, we use words. That are similar but different on the same document. Could be an argument that a conflicting in some way and mean different things. What we found, and that was the issue that was being addressed by the committee, when we looked at all of those instances. How they were being used in particular sentences, a particular word, whether it said shall or would or can. Was appropriate for what it was directing to us and it didn't cause confusion with what that direction was in the investment. That's why we didn't make the change. What was discussed is perhaps a a definition that would simply explicitly say those certain things met the same thing. We could have done that. I don't know that it was necessary, but certainly if the council feels uh differently, we would uh take that amendment, do so.
That answered your question. Please, go.
Yeah, I just personally, uh since I've been on here, I I really respect uh councilmember Bybee. You have a fantastic eye for detail, especially on these kinds of things. And that's why I'm grateful that you're on that particular committee. Uh so I want to just ask directly, like, do you feel comfortable with the language in proceeding?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Oh, I will entertain a motion if anybody is ready.
Well, i- if I could just make a quick comment, I understand it's, you know, maybe not pertinent to the to the discussion, but I do encourage uh. Colleagues and members of the public, um there's some great attachments here in terms of the presentation with economic information, and so definitely encourage just looking at that. Just for our own uh uh information, I found it valuable. Um with that said, I I'm happy to to make a motion. That the city council adopt resolution approving the annual update to the city's investment policy for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five.
In the desk guide? Or no, that was the last one. I'm sorry. Okay, second.
I'll second. And did we open this for public?
Yes. You know?
I don't remember.
Is there anybody from public? No one jumped, so.
Just want to make sure.
Yes. Everybody's nodding yes, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato.
Aye.
Councilmember Scizzola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
And thank you to Will and Chandler's uh Neil with Chandler. Thank you very much.
What's your vote?
Yes, sorry. All right. Uh next is unfinished business and item nine is the Climate Action Plan Greenhouse Gas Emission Inventory Results. And we have our environmental program specialist Tiffany Hudson. Turn the button on.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Landry, Vice Mayor Lopez, and city council members. Um I'm excited to share the results of the greenhouse gas inventory with you tonight. Um so I don't need any, we don't need any formal action taken by council tonight. We just wanted to share the results of the inventory, the future forecast. Um and discuss the California state climate goals and the implications of that for the reduction targets and sort of focus areas that we might set for where our climate action adaptation plan. I'm gonna also give a quick update on um the work plan milestones. So the city is committed to addressing climate change. Uh council has identified sustainability as a priority. It is um an action in our adopted general plan. That we create this climate action adaptation plan. Um and in in February, we awarded the contract to Rincon Consultants. Um we've got the team on the call tonight if there are any questions for them. Um and we hosted a kickoff and or we came for a kickoff in April, and we've been working um on doing a lot of the analysis ever since. And if you'll recall, uh we're doing a climate action and adaptation plan. So I get this question a lot of sort of what does that mean? So the action is about mitigation and addressing the source of emissions. And adaptation is about addressing the effects of climate change. So tonight, we'll really be focused on that mitigation part of the conversation. Um of where our emissions are coming from. And just again, to go over the sort of overview of the process, tonight, we're talking about greenhouse gas analysis. Uh we'll be back uh later this year to talk about the vulnerability assessment that we did. Um and as well as share an update on the ongoing community engagement and talk about sort of some of the visioning exercises we'll be doing with our advisory committee in the community. Um so you'll hear more from us uh moving forward, but we'll do that analysis and share those results with you. Before we discuss um the sorts of measures and actions we would want to put in the plan and then develop the actual plan document. So a greenhouse gas emissions inventory really serves to provide this comprehensive understanding of emissions within the city. Um so it helps us determine what our emissions are, where they're coming from, to set a baseline that we can do future projections. Um and also measure progress towards our goals. Um and helps us meet the state requirements or uh the state goals um that they've set. Um so it covers emission sources within Campbell, um that the city has any sort of influence or control over. Um so our inventory will does include electricity in buildings, uh natural gas used in buildings, on-road passenger travel. Off-road equipment, which is like construction equipment and other things like that. Um the use of energy and water treatment and distribution, as well as the generation of solid waste. So those are the sorts of categories that you'll see in the inventory. What you won't see are a couple of sources, including pass-through vehicle trips. So if someone drives through Campbell, but they don't stop or start their trip in the city, that would be captured in another city's inventory. Um we also didn't cover industrial sources. Those are captured by the state in their inventory. Um and we don't have a lot of industrial uses in the city as well. Um same for agriculture. And it doesn't include imported goods. So this is just a snapshot of one way to sort of categorize emissions. It doesn't capture everything. Um but it does follow um the community protocol set by ITLI, and then our municipal inventory. Uh follows the local government operations protocol. Um that's also part of ITLI. So as you can see here, our twenty twenty-two uh community inventory results are that we emitted um approximately two hundred and twenty-three thousand metric tons. Of carbon dioxide equivalent. Um so each uh gas has a sort of different global warming potential. Those are all converted into what we call CO2E um to give us sort of a a measure consistently across to get one number. Um so that's the that's the emissions for twenty twenty-two. Um fifty-nine percent of that came from on-road transportation. Uh twenty-six from natural gas in our buildings, uh six percent from off-road equipment, five from building electricity, four percent from solid waste. And very minimal emissions from water and none from wastewater. So it's really hard to sort of contextualize what that means, and we tried to do that a little bit by comparing it to the state. Um so we looked at what the per capita emissions were for each um sort of resident of Campbell. Um and compared it to the state. And again, the state has a sort of different protocol that they follow. They have other categories that they include in their inventory. So we removed any categories that weren't captured in Campbell's to try to do the best side-by-side comparison we could. So there are definitely asterisks uh along this data. But you can see um there's a quite a large difference between our building electricity. And what you see at the state level, and that is because of SVCE providing clean energy to Campbell residents and businesses. Um and then you'll see a slight difference in transportation, which might be due to higher EV adoption rates in the Bay Area than other parts of the state. Um but this is just sort of to contextualize it a little bit in sort of the larger state. But this is just sort of to contextualize it a little bit in sort of the larger state. So we also did a municipal inventory, which is a subset of emissions of the community inventory. So if you think about the lights on in this building, that's captured in both the community inventory as well as city operations. So for city operations, we emitted over 3,000 metric tons of CO2E in 2022, with the majority of that coming from transportation, so 69% of our emissions come from transportation. And that's roughly 55% for employee commutes and 14% for city fleet. And then the largest, next largest category is infrastructure natural gas at 21%, solid waste to 8%, and infrastructure electricity at 5%. So again, that just sort of gives you an idea of where emissions are coming from. So later, when we start talking about what the sorts of measures and actions that we'll want to put in the plan, you've seen this data, you know where the biggest sources are, and we can have a better conversation then. So this inventory is again just a point-in-time measure of emissions for 2022. We took that data and said, based on what we think, how we think the population will grow and jobs will grow in Campbell, based on both our housing element as well as the Bay Area's larger estimates, we did a forecast through 2045. So we have this sort of business as usual scenario. So if we continue to emit at the same rate, but we grow in population, our emissions will increase. The state also has passed a lot of legislation that will decrease emissions. So we also have this legislative adjusted forecast that takes into account different state legislation that will impact emissions. So that adjusted forecast really gives us a more accurate picture of what our future emissions might be. So if we look at sort of 2022, 2030, and then through 2045, you can see in our emissions today are over 223,000 metric tons of CO2E. And our adjusted forecast for 2045 estimates that our emissions will be over 301,000 metric tons of CO2E. So we'll see decreases in some of these categories, but again, based on population growth or job growth, that'll offset that. So we're still looking at an increase in emissions through 2045. So again, the state has a couple of goals, so SB 32 says it will achieve a 40% reduction below 1990 levels by 2030. And then AV 1279 says that the state will achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions as soon as possible, but no later than 2045. So if we think about trying to align with state goals, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. So we've mapped out, again, this business as usual forecast compared to the adjusted forecast. And then you can see this SB 32 pathway. So between now and 2030, if we were to align with state goals, we would need to drop our emissions to 160,000 metric tons carbon per year. And then if we were to meet the 2045 goal of carbon neutrality, we would need to reduce our annual emissions by over 300,000 metric tons of CO2E. So how can we reach those targets? Because those are some really big numbers. You know, again, we'll, we'll be back to have a deeper discussion about what the sorts of measures and actions in the plan might be. But some ways that other cities are approaching this is, you know, renewable, carbon-free electricity, which we've already got through SVCE, electrifying existing buildings, because again, a lot of our emissions come from natural gas in our buildings, prioritize walking and biking, increasing EV adoption, and then waste diversion and water conservation. So just go through very quickly sort of some things that we're already doing as a city and some things that we might want to consider. So again, we're already getting clean energy from SVCE. What else could we do? We could reduce the rate of customers that opt out of SVCE and add local solar and battery, which helps build that resiliency, which is a little bit more of that adaptation piece. As far as electrifying buildings, we passed an air quality ordinance recently. We still have the pre-wiring requirements that were in our 2022 REACH code. And once enforcement of backmed NOCS rules start going into effect, we'll start to see a decrease in emissions from natural gas. But what else we could do is retrofit existing buildings in Campbell, providing education programs, as well as incentives and support, whether that's city-driven or partnering with other organizations to help electrify our buildings. As far as prioritizing walking and biking, we'll begin the multi-modal transportation plan next year. So that'll help us figure out sort of how do we prioritize these other modes that aren't just driving. But we can, you know, continue to improve safety of bike lanes and walkways, improve public transportation, and increase diversity of land use types, so people don't need to travel as far. And then as far as EV adoption, we already have over 100 publicly available chargers in the city. And we have an EV REACH code for residential that requires not just Level One in new homes, but Level Two charging. But we can continue increasing the number of publicly available charging stations. We can increase our REACH code requirements or incentivize the installation of charging stations in multifamily housing. Again, these are just some ideas of things that other cities are doing and things that we might consider, not necessarily something that needs to go into the plan or will. And then for the last category, waste diversion and water conservation, we already have organics collection. We have landscape rebate programs available through Valley Water, but we can continue to reduce organic waste. We could explore edible food recovery programs or coordinate with Valley Water or San Jose Water Company to increase gray water use. So those are just a few different ways that we might be able to reach our targets. But just to recap all of this, our emissions for 2022 for community by emissions inventory was 200, over 223,000 metric tons of CO2E projected to rise to over 301,000. And aligning with state goals would mean that we reduce our annual emissions by 37% in the next six years, and then reduce annual community emissions by almost 300,000 by 2045. So next steps, again, I'll be back later this year to talk about the vulnerability assessment, update you all on the public engagement that's happened to date, as well as some update on some visioning exercises we'll be doing with our community advisory committee and CBO partners. And then we'll do a study session, we'll be here for a study session next year to assess these potential pathways of how we might reach these goals. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have council, oh, Brian?
Can I just interject really quickly before we take additional council questions? Can you speak a little bit on the methodology and the calculation? I hear you say ITCLI. I'm not sure council and the public knows what that is. Can you explain how that standard we used and how we developed these numbers? Just.
Sure, so, so ITCLI is a non-government organization that's really the leader in this space, so they've set these different protocols. Again, for like if we're doing community emissions, it's slightly different than doing municipal operations. So they've set these. So our partner consultants Rincon have done, I think, over 60 of these climate action plans. So they really developed the methodology to do the modeling. But we did a lot of data collection, so we got data from Silicon Valley Clean Energy and PG&E on how much electricity and gas is used, both in residential and non-residential buildings. And then applied emissions factors to that based on, again, whether it's natural gas and/or whether it's clean energy. And then for, so that covers buildings, natural gas, for transportation. We used a modeling tool called Replica that gets really granular data about trips and where they begin and where they end and what load they were taking. And again, applied emissions factors. And Ryan, or can you like jump in to provide a little bit more of the granularity, granularity if you want to get there? And then also collected data from water usage from Valley Water and different partners about how much waste we produce, how much waste goes to the landfill, how much gets separated out. So we just sort of measured all of those activities and then applied emissions factors to those to get these numbers.
Thank you. I just highlight that because we're dealing with a lot of numbers here. And it's easy to say 223,000 metric tons, 301,000, and come up with numbers. But it's important to really think about how those numbers develop and where those numbers came from, because it's the genesis and everything we're going to go for. So I appreciate you letting me ask that question, because I think it's helpful for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Question?
Thank you, I do have a question. At the, at the very beginning of your report, you had mentioned something about not counting or considering or ruling out for purposes of the data that you presented, the industrial areas. And I was a little puzzled by that in terms of what you meant. And I wondered if you might just elaborate on that. I mean, we do have two, what I might call principal industrial areas, Dell Avenue as well as McGlinsey Lane and so on. I just wondered if you might.
Yeah, do you mind if either Ryan or Camila jump in and they can talk sort of more about like what's included and how that's captured?
Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Good evening, this is Ryan Gardner with Rincon Consultants. We generally end up leaving out industrial emissions associated with natural gas and electricity. One, because that data is oftentimes very hard to get if there's very limited industrial activity. And that's because of the privacy rules that the CPUC has established. We refer to them as the 1515 rule, so no one meter, or they won't provide data unless there's more than 15 meters and no one meter is more than 15% of the total group. So oftentimes for a city like Campbell, those just get removed. And then the other reason is because the state of California has the CAP and Trade Program, which covers industrial emission sources, is already kind of being taken care of by that state level. So we really focus on those areas that are kind of more directly within the control of the city around commercial and residential sources.
I think so. Here really is referring to sort of like if we had a large manufacturing plant or some other plant that utilized a lot of energy or generated a lot of waste and things of that nature.
Exactly, yes. If there was like a, yeah, exactly that.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Which slide would you? That's a great question, Ryan. I know we had you pull this. Do you have any insight into, I know we combined some categories based on how the state breaks out data. So if you look at the last year, so solid waste is 4%, the other are quite small. So we, we've lumped that in together as one category, as sort of all other, just based on how the state sort of does their inventory. But Ryan, you might be able to chime in a little bit more on that.
Yeah, it's exactly that. The categories that the state has in their inventory doesn't line up perfectly with like the subset that we had, so we had to like combine things in a bit of a different way. So you can see that, that all other is solid waste, wastewater, and water altogether. And when we take like the averages across the entire state, those things together are a little bit smaller than what they are in Campbell. But I wouldn't be able to say exactly why that is on a per capita basis without like digging in deeper. And this is really a rough estimate, because the state has so many different types of uses. So we had to strip out industrial and some other things out of there to try to get a reasonable comparison. But this is not what I would call like a perfect representation of the two. It's a, it's kind of an estimate just for, to illustrate where you guys are in general compared to the state average.
I wanted to clarify that. Okay, that was my question. I'm going to open it up to the public now. I have one speaker card so far, Elka.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, my name is Elka Uggewall, and I'm on the CAP Advisory Committee. I'm also a physician, researcher, and I've published multiple articles on sustainable nutrition and health. And I'm a member of the Santa Clara County Medical Association's Environmental Health Committee. One crucial element missing from this inventory is emissions from food. Why? Because food systems are responsible for one-third of all greenhouse gas emissions. A consumption-based emissions inventory of the Bay Area conducted by UC Berkeley in 2015 found that food contributes to roughly 20% of all Bay Area greenhouse gas emissions when considered on a consumption basis. Research shows that shifting to a climate-friendly diet is a high-impact action for reducing emissions, greater than eating local, composting, recycling, using reusable bags, and even reducing food waste by 100%. Even the UN and IPCC have clearly stated the single most effective shift for reducing greenhouse gas emissions is shifting our diet. We can each reduce our carbon footprint by 50% just by shifting our diet. Yet, most Americans polled do not believe that diet is related to climate change. But we can change that by including food emissions in our cap, and we can empower residents to reduce their carbon footprints. Not everyone can afford to electrify, but shifting diet doesn't cost anything and can even save money. And consumption-based inventory, including food emissions, can also help close inequity gaps. So when we look at consumption-based inventories, the UC Berkeley report found large inequalities in climate responsibility between cities and neighborhoods. So while certain neighborhoods are responsible for a greater carbon footprint, others are disproportionately affected by the resulting climate change. Pre-existing health status affects how climate resilient we are. And certain communities, like communities of color, have a higher risk for chronic illnesses. In addition, they're disproportionately affected by climate change. Shifting diet can improve health status, promote health, climate resilience, and significantly reduce emissions. I'm just urging you to please ask for the inclusion of food emissions in our cap. Thank you.
So we focused on areas of our cap that the city has influence and control over. So we can pass policies that impact, you know, natural gas in buildings or how people move through the city. It's a lot harder to sort of influence the things that people buy. What we've talked about doing is having some education piece, whether that's on our website or with partner CBOs or even in the cap itself, saying, here are some ways that you as an individual can reduce your carbon footprint. That's sort of separate of here are the policies that the city is going to take, and here's the plans that we're going to do and studies that we might do. So that's, that's a conversation that we've been having of ways that we can include that. I think it gets a lot harder to do a sort of consumption-based inventory, looking at, again, like what people buy, whether that's food or products, like I said, imported goods aren't included in this inventory, because you start getting sort of less reliable data. And it's a little bit harder to sort of quantify that and measure progress on that. Ryan, if you have anything else that you want to add in your experience working on these caps, feel free to jump in as well.
Yeah, thanks. I think, you know, the commenter makes a lot of really great points and like agree with all those statements. I think one of the challenging things for cities when measuring consumptive emissions is just the sheer cost and complexity of doing a consumptive-based inventory. Only a handful of cities have ever commissioned their own. And they're really hard to replicate, so it's hard to kind of show changes over time. The UC Berkeley program that was mentioned, the Cool Climate Calculator, is a really good way to kind of get a snapshot of where those emissions come from. And what we've done in a few other cities is use that data to kind of, as an informational point. So it's not something where you'd be able to, you know, read years and see progress, but you can kind of call out those consumptive emissions and include some strategies around that just to kind of help educate people. And that is one way that we've gone with some other cities in the region and kind of around California to try to bridge that gap between the desire to have some information around consumptive base, but the kind of difficulty in getting that data and kind of tracking progress in that area.
The data is hard to collect, but you will be discussing further the potential of having some level of like education program, some level of strategy. So we're not forgetting it completely. It's just because we're looking at firm policies for the city. And if you can't collect the data, it's kind of hard to have a firm policy.
Right. The hope would be we do this inventory and do future inventories and we can see sort of how we move the needle. And as Ryan mentioned, the UC Berkeley study is like this point in time. So what we can do is again, provide some of that data of like, here's sort of what it is and still have, you know, an action in the cap could be create an education program around this or create some sort of programming around this. And that's something we could definitely do and consider as an action. It just isn't reflected in the inventory itself.
I have a question I forgot to ask you earlier. So how do these levels that you're throwing out, this three hundred thousand numbers and all this, how does that equate to temperature rise? Like it's, like at what point does a half degree or a degree of temperature goes up? Is that equitable to what these gas emissions?
Ryan, I saw you come off mute.
I mean, I think, I think the answer is like, no. You know, Campbell could be carbon neutral tomorrow and that would not stop climate change, right? Like, and that is oftentimes thrown out as a reason why we shouldn't do things. Because, oh, it doesn't matter what like my individual emissions are. But I think the counterpoint is that we, we all have to make these changes and reduce our emissions. And the IPCC targets, which are trying to limit our warming to one point five degrees Celsius. The state of California targets are aligned with that. So a global forty percent reduction below nineteen ninety levels would allow us to reach that kind of limiting to one point five degrees Celsius. So California has aligned with that and that's why we're aligning with the state targets. And then again, that working towards carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five would kind of help get us below that one point five, two degrees warming, which is where the science currently tells us is we start to experience like the worst or like the more severe impacts of climate change. So I wouldn't think of it so much as like, oh, we're going to reduce some amount of warming based on the amount of emissions, but more we're going to align with this global scientifically identified target that we think is going to keep the worst impacts of climate change at bay.
I don't know that that answered my question. I'm not sure you can, but I was trying to equate this three hundred thousand number on your chart where the.
With some sort of temperature?
Like, yeah, how does that equate to? I understand, you know.
We are like this small and it's a global scale and all of those emissions are contributing. So it's to Ryan's point, it's really hard to say like, we are such a small fraction of that. But if we do our part and we reach these state targets and the state reaches the state targets and globally reach those targets, then we prevent the sort of increase in temperatures that science, scientists have said we need to do. I don't, I don't know that that really answers your.
Struggling. I, I understand we're in, we're very small in the grand scheme. We do want to do everything we can. But I'm just trying to like, when my sister comes at me and says, climate change has been going on for millions of years. We're not affecting anything. I like to come back and have some facts and like, if we can reduce by a million things, then the temperature will not rise more than one, but there isn't that.
I don't know if, Ryan, if there's a global number of how many emissions we need to cut, how quickly, but.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine. That, that answers my question then.
I'm sure that there is, like, there is a, the IPCC works off of like a global carbon budget. And there is that number. I just, I don't know what that is off the top of my head. But the challenging part is like California's emissions statewide are three hundred eighty-one million metric tons. And yours are, you know, three hundred thousand. So we're talking like three orders of magnitude different. And even California is small in like the scheme of the global economy. So there's just trying to think of like your individual or cities' reduction in the scheme of this global thing is, I don't know the right way to think about it.
That's fine. I'm, I just was hoping for some quick response to someone who says there's, climate change doesn't matter. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any final comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Sergio, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
First, I, I really appreciate the great work that's gone into this, the fact that we're doing it. I had some questions about the methodology and so it was very helpful to walk through that. And here the granularity with, with which we're, we're going to the individual sources and just getting really high-quality data. So just want to start by celebrating that. I really appreciate also the, the commenter. I, I'm not sure that the comments were geared so much adding something to this measure that we're talking out here today. I understand where we're on the process, but more of looking at the overall CAAP. And in, in that spirit, I also wanted to add something, both some, some context information and then, you know, suggestion to look at as, as we move forward through the process. One of the things that I found surveying on the board of the Air District is that Santa Clara County is actually one of the highest. And, you know, depends on which measure you're looking at, but one of the highest in the nine-county Bay Area region for pollution. Usually the numbers I look at have it number two overall as a rough kind of general summary. But it's, it's not something that's actually, for the most part, within the Air District's ability to control because the majority of that pollution is coming from highways in particular matter. And, and so, so literally tiny pieces of tires coming off of cars and going to the air becoming pollution. And that's important to think about because that continues even if we move entirely, you know, even if overnight we could go to all-electric cars, we would still have that particular pollution. And by most measures, you'd actually have more of it because the EV vehicles might, might actually weigh more. Or, you know, because of the, these other factors, you know, Americans are moving towards larger and larger cars, even if they are electric. And so it's something that's important to think about. The, the, the Air District only regulates standing non-mobile sources of pollution. But I think it's something that's important for us to look at in the, in the big picture. So my, my point with this is I, I think similar to the, the questions that the comments made, that the public commenter made. I understand that, you know, this is really high-quality data that we're looking at here. I feel, you know, really good about moving forward with this. And part of what allows that to work is that it's a very standard agreed-upon benchmark. And so, you know, the, it's, it's not the right approach to start tweaking that with our own things because then we're going to lose that ability to have that as a common measuring stick. But what I would suggest is that, you know, for, to listen to feedback today, the, the commenter talking about food, you know, talking about mobile sources, which I, I understand reading through this report are not a part of the criteria for greenhouse gas emissions that we're thinking about it. But think about it in the context of the all, overall climate action plan and whether it's education. I would also think about incentives, really to think, you know, I would think also about partnerships with other agencies. So, you know, yes, it may not be something that the city of Campbell can pass a policy and change overnight, but we're looking at this really holistically. And I think, one, our residents are going to expect to look at this plan and use it as a resource for, for what they can do. And so we should think of it through, through that lens, not just, you know, to inform us as policymakers. I, I think it can serve multiple purposes. But also really think about, okay, what, you know, are there things that we could do within the broader ecosystem in the region with other cities, with the Air District, with BTA, or just through education to address these different challenges? Like, you know, I, I would really encourage that kind of thinking, which may not go into this greenhouse gas emissions benchmark, but I think it's where we need to move. But that said, I'm really excited just about this whole process and, and about this step and just appreciate all the really good work that's going. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we got, I'm trying to look both ways. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Thank you so much for the presentation. This is some of the most exciting stuff for me personally. So I thought, Mirandry brought up a really great point, that there really is a significant part of the population that, that believes, you know, this is all just some mass conspiracy to hoax, you know, that, that we don't have to do anything about this, you know? And so I'd like to speak to those in our community that, that might think that way. So even if it is some grand conspiracy, you know, what I love about this is that we are going to change our city into an even more beautiful city. We're going to have a much walk, much more walkable, bikeable. We're going to develop transit-oriented or public transit-oriented communities. We have the light rail here. We have so much we can take advantage of. We have, we already have things like Rob, who's, you know, got these amazing plans for the future. And it does all come together. And so, you know, and as a director of SBCE, I'm not surprised to see cars are the number one greenhouse gas emitters. It's just a simple fact that anywhere regionally, SBC says the same thing, just cars. That's what it is. So the more we shift towards these transit-oriented developments, the better for everyone. And, you know, when I go to Europe or I was just in Japan, it's so nice, you know, you just hop on the high-speed train. I'm going from Tokyo to Hiroshima in less than three hours, you know? And I want similar things for us. We're a very car-oriented culture. We always have been. We're very unique in that way. And, you know, I love cars too, but I'm very excited about the future. And I think that's, I mean, just we see the evidence right there that we have to make the transition. And believe me, even to those who think it's a hoax, you're going to love, you're going to love the, the change. So let's just, I'll get on the same page with this. That's all I got to say.
You need to come to my family dinner. Or lunch or whatever. Yeah, I really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you to Ryan for being part of us, the meeting tonight. This is so exciting for me and we've been waiting for years to have our climate action plan even started. So knowing that we're making progress is great. And I'll make a little plug for tomorrow night. We're going to be talking more about sustainability. And you have a little talk you're doing on the climate action. So I think this is great. And I'm adding this to my speech tomorrow that, that we are doing this right now. So thank you for all the information and all the data that you've collected. I do find it interesting though, I live near Highway seventeen and I have a HEPA filter and a carbon filter. The particulate manner that is in that filter is just disgusting. And it goes from black to dark gray and it says change every three months. And I'm like looking at a month going, no, this is like really bad. But we're not capturing any of that in this data, which is a little bit frustrating. But thank you for all your effort and thank you, Ryan, for speaking with us tonight. Okay, at that, at this point now, are we ready for a motion?
I just have one other comment to the speaker who talked us about diet. I found that very interesting and I'm wondering if there were some references or perhaps a report that you might provide to the staff that we might take a look at. I'd like to read into that a, a little further. So, so I appreciate. Thank you.
Information only. We don't need a motion. All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I attended the West Valley College sixtieth anniversary gala event over the weekend and it was a really nice event, very, very well organized. And they really had a nice turnout. I also attended the Coa Strong Kindness Rock Garden unveiling and the, the launch of the Santa Clara County Library Story Walk at Jack Fisher Park. And I want to thank our recreation staff, Natasha and your, and your staff for facilitating both events. They were well-attended and very fun events. And then just an announcement that the Cities Association Holiday Party is scheduled for Friday, December thirteenth. So put a hold on your calendars if you want to attend that. And that's it. Thank you.
We had our meeting of the BTA Board of Directors and had some important updates about some legislation that might be coming up. They might be looking at for potential revenue for, for the region for transit measures so early in the discussions. But, you know, we're of course benefiting from our State Senator Dave Grittezi, who is, is Chair this year of the Senate Transportation Committee, a very impactful position. So, so we're in close contact with him. Also wanted to share a save the date for September twenty-fifth. The League of Cities Peninsula Division is, is holding an event actually very, very timely for the topic tonight. We're just doing it on sustainability and, and climate change. And ended up going with a topic where there's a lot of work going on, but that we felt could, could just stand for us to shed some more light, which is sea level rise and which actually impacts a large percentage of the cities in, in Santa Clara County and along the peninsula. Maybe not so much Campbell, but definitely impacts our region as a whole. And we're going to have some, some really great speakers coming. This, this is going to be, I mentioned the date, September twenty-fifth. It's from twelve to one thirty at Skyline College. It's just a beautiful, stunning view literally on the seaside. So can't imagine a, a better venue for it. It'll be a moderated Q and A with student participation and also reduced rate of twenty-five dollars. Heard your, your, you know, feedback about the prices. And so we're, we are looking to offer a reduced rate for, for this event. And so if anyone has questions, you should have, you, you should have an email about RSVPing, but please reach out to me if, if you'd like to get registered and you don't see that or if you have any other questions.
Thank you. As a follow-up to your comment, you might recall, ABAG has looked into this as well with the rise in sea level, especially as it affects those cities that surround San Francisco Bay and the requirement that they each have to produce a report as to how they're going to address that for their city. I'm not sure if the program that you mentioned with the Peninsula Division may include a representative of ABAG or at least inviting them to come to the meeting and listen.
It, it does have, not ABAG, but folks who have worked, who have been part of that effort. So that will be part of the discussion.
Thank you. I wanted to report on some of the boards. First of all, with respect to the Solid Waste Board, I think I mentioned to you before that the new contract is going into effect. It's in effect now, which means increased rates, I think, as you all know. And we've, there are some other changes that are taking place in terms of the small sort of like condo units or apartments now require that their inhabitants receive individual bills, no longer sort of like the, the group large bins, but individual bills, which also means individual containers for recycling waste as well as organic waste. And so for some sort of units that are crowded together with very little space, it makes it difficult to put out all these bins and have enough space between them so that the appropriate trucks can come in and pick them up to empty them. So all of that is being looked at. I don't want to bore you with all the details, but we have received some complaints along that line and the board and others are looking into that, what we might do in the future about it. So, and also with respect to the sanitary waste board, they recently had commissioned a complete review and analysis of the efficiency of our particular agency. And fortunately, the West Valley Sanitation District report indicates that we are among some of the highest efficient and top-performing sanitary waste boards in the state. So it's a very good report. One fortunate thing there, there's no increase in rate that's anticipated for the, for the future, at least for the near future, meaning a couple of years or so. meaning a couple of years or so till we look at it again. And then finally, um, the Stormwater Management Authority, or basically, uh, the, the regulatory authority that the four cities, Campbell, Los Gatos, Saratoga, Manasurino, subscribe to, is kind of a JPA, um, which, which enforces the criteria for stormwater management. Basically, the things that go into the stormwater, which goes directly into the creeks and floods it and requires, uh, certain standards, um, for sheltering, uh, stormwater drains, especially during building processes and things of that nature. Um, there's always been a lot of confusion about the proper name. The name for a long time has been called the West Valley Clean Water Authority. And it's confusing to a lot of people. What does that really mean? You know, there's the Water District and the Water Company. And, uh, and, uh, then we have the, uh, Clean Water Authority. So after much discussing and review and using consultants and getting your final report, the board decided to change the name to be a little more descriptive. So it will now be known in the future as the West Valley Stormwater Authority. So it sort of describes more specifically what the name and what this agency does. So, um, that will be coming in the new literature that sort of advertises and, uh, talks about that particular agency. So that's, those are my reports. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm really glad that, uh, council member Fratello brought up the multi. I'm sure it was well-intentioned, but having all of those separate waste containers, I can only imagine on my court along with all the condos and apartments, the chaos that it would induce. And, you know, the, the parking along the street would be pretty much nonexistent. So I, I really hope they take a second look at that. Um, okay, and the only other thing I have to report is, I also attended the West Valley College sixtieth anniversary event. It was fantastic, uh, really fun, a lot of great people there. And for me personally, uh, it was so nice. That was the first college I had ever attended. And then, uh, after my teaching credential, it was the first job I ever got teaching. The College for Kids Program there doing summers for a few years. So anyways, wonderful.
What, what I find interesting about sea level rise and stormwater, no one mentioned anything about how many storm drains are gonna back up when the sea level rises. All our storm drains are gravity or pumped. Some of our stuff gets pumped up. But everything drains to the bay. So as the bay fills up and the Santa Clara Valley Water District has talked about that, that even though our city doesn't touch the bay, that we could be affected by the storm drain backup. So I thought that was interesting. Uh, so the things that I have done the last two weeks is I attended the Story Walk at Jack Fisher Park. It was great. I don't know how many little kids there were there, thirty, forty families with little kids. And it's so cute, the little storyboard as you go around the park. I think it's a great enhancement. That was a great idea. Um, I also attended the Parks Master Plan Meeting at the Community Center. I thought that was well-attended. The consultant did a great job. Um, I got to put my little Post-it note on the board about having an orchard somewhere in Campbell. I'm pushing for that. Um, I was at the Coa Strong Rock Garden Kindness, Coa Rock Kindness Garden. Um, I think I told you guys a couple of weeks ago, I had painted a rock and named it my mom and put it right in front under the sign with her name there. Um, Chief Berg and I both attended the Friends of Murdered Children's Candlelight Vigil on nine eleven, um, where it was pretty sad to hear about how many people actually have had a child murdered. Um, that was pretty sad and, but also the whole thing of nine eleven and what happened. Uh, we all did some candle lighting around that event. Um, the last one is, I'm the representative for the DCBA and they gave me this assigned list all year and I have got my last item done, which was looking at all the P parking signs in downtown. And thank you, Ron. He's sitting over there, I think, still. No? Uh, Ron from, uh, Public Works drove me around and we marked every single sign and put whatever direction it's going on. And it's up to them to say if they, you know, if they think we should have any additional signs. So that was interesting. So I think that's it and thank you all. And I hope to see everybody tomorrow at night at our State of the City, which our theme is sustainability. Thank you.